At this time, I'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the visitor comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be public comments section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign up sheet located near the entry to the board room. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide additional or will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also call or email the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting and the board of director of the board of directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, second district and board president. Other members of the board and staff include Bill Johnson, David Haley, Stevie Wake Senior, Brett Parker, third district Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position three, and Angela Lawson, acting chief counsel. As a reminder, please set your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under one indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
At this time, I would ask for, or I would ask if there are any other additions or corrections or additions to the amended agenda for this evening's session.
I move adoption of the amended agenda.
Okay, Abby.
Wait, second.
Wait, second, and moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the special session of August seventh, 2024, are there any comments, additions, corrections?
Ms. Rose, so moved.
Wait, second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of August seventh, 2024, are there any additions, corrections, comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting, meeting over to Bill Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'll ask if there's someone, anyone here signing up to speak tonight? Okay, first I'll ask Camille Barber. You would come up. She could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the board.
My name is Camille Barber. I live in nineteen seventeen North Fourteenth Street, zip code six six one zero four. And I have a follow up question from the last time I was here. I inquired about the lobby being reopened, the customer service lobby being reopened here in this building. Has there been any progress or any updates on when the lobby will be reopened?
So you can currently come in and make an appointment to meet with the customer service representative anytime you feel like you need to, I think, or the telephone option available. I'm sorry. Okay, so if you go online, you can make the.
Can't go online.
I'm sorry.
What if you're unable to go online?
Is it for you or is it for people in general?
General, people in general.
So I think the either last board meeting, I think we made an announcement as to when the telephone option would be available where people could come in, could call in rather, and set their appointments that way.
But no open lobby customer service as we had before.
It's not open as it used to be prior to the pandemic.
Okay, and again, the reason being why?
Well, cost, safety, all the other things that we talked about at the time when the lobby was closed.
And that was due to COVID.
Then we would have to go back and incur all the costs and all, but all the safety requirements, everything back in place for that purpose.
And I don't find that customer service friendly, and this is supposed to be a public utility company.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Another question that I had was about the kiosk where you pay in the lobby at the kiosk and that the kiosk doesn't give you change, that the procedure is that if you have more than the, your bill is, if you have more money than your bill actually is, that the kiosk will keep your change and credit it to your next bill? And the question was, when would we be able to get our change? Because everybody cannot afford for you all to keep the change. So is there any progress on the kiosk being able to give you a change?
You have thirty seconds, and I've got, I'll get an answer to that, but you have another question?
Okay. Nope, that's it.
Okay, so I'll ask customer service to come up and talk about any progress that we've made in that regard.
And that takes us to time. Hi, Jonetta Hanson, customer service. We have checked, and there are not machines at this time that give change back. They just, machines are configured, they don't allow change, they only receive, but they do not output any money. So those are not any machines available that will do that type of transaction.
But Jonetta, just as a follow up question, there are not machines through the vendor that we use that offer that, I mean, they just don't have that capability? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
There are machines out there, are there not, that were, you can put a ten dollar bill in or whatever, and it'll give you, it'll make change?
There are change machines, but we don't have one at this time. I can look into seeing about getting a change machine, the cost of that, and then getting it serviced because someone, an armored car service would have to come by, they would have to take what's in there out, and they would have to be responsible for putting that, that back in so somebody can handle that. So we'd have to have a contract with someone to do that.
Good, good. Yeah. Bill, continue that.
We will, we will. And we'll report back at the, Jonetta, if you can check in that, and we'll report back for the next board meeting. Thank you. Next, Pam Hicks. I'm sorry. Okay, Louise Lynch. If you can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Louise Lynch, KCK. So I want to talk about the big elephant in the room, the budget that happened last week at the UG meeting in regards to how it affects BPU and our bills and the shenanigans that are being played. I have to say that I was inspired last night by Michelle Obama, who says, we can't just complain, we have to do something. And now is the time when we have to do something. At the UG meeting, it was talked about that they are going to be raising the storm fees and the wastewater fees fifteen percent, the trash two dollars and twenty cents, the recycling a dollar and seven cents on people who are already struggling. On top of, their relief is they took the pilot off the bill, but we have to pay, well, UG, BPU has to pay thirty eight million, and it has been advised that you raise our rates twelve percent. As we know with the pilot, it is not just the electrical or just the water rate that you raise, it's based on all your revenues. So we're looking at, I was talking to some residents last night and looking at some of the bills and what that would entail. The difference is, not only is the, leaving the pilot on the bill less, but we are going to be paying an additional like fifteen dollars more a month per resident every month, which is ridiculous. There were six commissioners who voted against, who voted for it, and they are the three Bs, Bynum, Burns, Burrows, Townsend, Hale, and Davis. These are people who are willing to put more fees on our bill. So the one thing that we need to do is we need to have them take all of these UG fees off our bill, and then we need to replace these commissioners. We need the BPU board and the general manager to assist us in recommending and demanding, we can't do this. If you take all the extras that they're going to put on our bill and you times them by the sixty five thousand residents, and the reason I don't say businesses and commercial businesses, because we know that the administrator has gone ahead and insulated these businesses from getting any rate increases. Ridiculous, putting it all on the residents. We don't even know what next year's, this upcoming winter's fees are going to be. So when you multiply it by all those thousands of people, you only come up with twenty five million, which means that we are still short fifteen million dollars that the UG wants from us, and they will be creative. They didn't talk about the one million dollar TIF that no one knows where it's at and hasn't been on the bill that could have been used for our fees. We're not talking about the seven million dollars that they talked about with the Cerner exit, and nobody knows where that money is.
That was three minutes.
Thank you. We need to do something now, and we need to take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next name I'll call is Cece Harlan. Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Cece Harlan, and I live in Wyandotte County. So I'm going to talk about a few things that David Johnson said at the last budget meeting that I was at, or yeah, the last one. BPU is incorrectly billing customers a pilot fee. BPU was supposed to pay the UG from its, from the monies received out of the rate pay, out of the rates and not adding an extra fee onto the customers. The customers will not pay the pilot fee and should not have been paying it all this time. I know that they, this is his words, I know that they don't like it, but hey, follow the law. For once, I'm not even upset at y'all, but here's the thing, he said, follow the law. If you are getting poor advice from your legal department, how can you follow the law? Except for the ones who are attorneys on this board, how can you follow the law if you're getting poor advice? Your attorney should have told you years ago that the pilot fee was illegal, because when it was placed on here, y'all had MVP law firm, and you still have MVP law firm. So if they didn't know it then, and they don't know it now, then I'm not going to continue to pay an attorney or a law firm who is costing me money because y'all have been sued, you and the UG have been sued up and down for the last couple of years, losing all kind of taxpayer dollars that we have to pay out for these so called mistakes. But when are y'all going to change the law firm? And I'm not targeting any one attorney, I just mean the law firm, because y'all are paying out money based off of legal advice from a law firm. So at some point, y'all have to change that. Another thing I want to talk about real quick is I've talked to several community members who are, who are telling me they have something called an even payment plan, where they pay the same amount every year, and I'm afraid that the whole community is not receiving this, because I've had some of the elderly people call in, and they told them they don't have that, no such plan. But I've seen other people's bills where their bill has stayed the same amount constantly for years on an even payment plan. So either everybody can get it or nobody can get it, I'm just saying it. But I think that that would benefit the elderly community a whole lot. The last thing I want to do is the lady, the first lady who spoke when they said we don't have change, well, open up the lobby. I don't even think that y'all even passed, did y'all ask the owners, the residents, how they felt about you closing their lobby?
You have thirty seconds.
You did not? Y'all didn't even vote on it from our, for, for all I know, and I know I've been at these meetings pretty much. You didn't even vote on closing that lobby. Y'all closed it down during COVID, y'all saved money during COVID, and y'all said, hey, we're not going to open it back up. So I just want to say, open the lobby back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina Crawford. Come up, podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Trina Crawford, Verde Drive, Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County. I would first like to preface this by saying thank you for allowing me this opportunity, but also I would say I have much disdain, and up until now, I have been neglectful in showing up at these meetings. But I'm here today just to address something that is purely circumstantial, because I don't have exact calculations or complete names of the individuals involved. But it was brought to my attention that one of your employees, first name Carlos, not sure of position, lives in apartments at Legends two six seven, and made a comment to the staff in the office that if, if he took care of a twenty five thousand dollar bill, if he could have his rent free for the next year. My challenge with that is, do you have employees who have the autonomy to do that? Secondly, is this something that you all are aware of, individuals saying that they can do these types of things within your organization? My next statement is to ask a question, sort of, kind of. I was at a commissioner meeting, and Mr. Wakes was there presenting, and the discussion eluded to the fact that you all and the commissioners don't have frequent, the UG and the BPU department don't have frequent sit down at the table, converse, and consolidate ideas and get an understanding. I'm confused about that, because it is said that UG owns BPU, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm challenged by the fact that a organization that owns a company, we're not sitting at the table and communicating. That's called dysfunction, and I believe that that's why this spirit of poverty is lingering over Wyandotte County, because those who are at the top are not communicating and meeting the needs of this community effectively. I have a grandmother who is eighty nine years old, and I don't want her to spend most of her check trying to pay BPU, and I can't afford to pay her bill. I would, but I cannot afford to pay it, because mine for these last two months has been five hundred and ninety seven dollars. I'm confused. I'm struggling. I have two grandchildren that I care for full time. I have to put one in private school because our educational system can't meet his needs. I can't afford my bill to fluctuate in that capacity. I want to know, what are you all going to do to serve this community effectively? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, if you're going to stay around for the duration, I do.
I'd like to show you a picture of the individual, if I may.
Not right now, are you going to?
No.
Are you going to stay?
I'm doing my best. I just. So you can contact me, my name is on the, on the page.
Yes, first. Can I, can I get you to speak with Abby in the back? Thank you. Next person signed up is Pamela Pan Hicks.
Pamela Pan Hicks. So I came early today, pardon me, Wyandotte County.
Okay.
I came early today to the work session, because there was a heading on the agenda that there would be a board update and a GM update, and I had hoped at that time that we would hear some more information about the things that are concerning this community. That failure during that meeting was very telling, because this community is very concerned that the UG and the BPU have not been able to provide a resolution to the pilot fee that doesn't adversely affect the residential rate payers. The proposal that the BPU increase rates to cover the pilot presents an unacceptable burden, as you well know. You have shared that information with us at your meetings, that we have an increase in people asking for assistance, as well as trying to reduce their consumption in order to manage their bills. The alternative to absorb the BPU under the UG would further aggravate the situation due to mismanagement and a lack of expertise. The UG basically threw you all under the bus, even though they're your parent corporation, they did not show any respect to you or to people who utilize the BPU. So the community has no choice but to seek alternatives that would give us more options to receive and improve our ability to receive fair rates and remove the barriers that present our ability to receive the services we all need. You've heard some people this evening who have expressed that the burdens that are placed on us with the rate increases and the UG fees is overwhelming for many, many people in this community, and as such, the reduction of services, the customer service to the BBU denies people access to get their issues resolved early before it becomes a personal problem that they cannot overcome by not being able to pay their bill. The addition of the UG fees increases the burden that people have. So we would need from you all, some resolution to the UG to remove those UG fees off of our bills and to give us an opportunity to figure out another way in which the BPU can manage to pay the UG what it rightfully is owing and help us to receive back our payment for our, the unfair and unlawful receipt of the pilot funds from this community. We would appreciate your help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person sign up, speak is Ty Gorman. If you can state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ty Gorman, two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, six six one oh four. Yeah, I want to first address the, the meeting, the session before this, and appreciate all the discussion there on planning and opening the process up to not only outside modeling and analysis that can come in from groups, including groups other than Sierra Club that are interested in this, but I think I'm the only one that people not like that come to, because I live here, and I'm the only one that knows what's happening. So, but people are interested, not only, not only individuals, but organizations that want to see good planning in municipal groups and have, you know, money to do stuff like that outside here. So having that kind of system can bring resources and analysis for free into the community and really help, help keep those planning costs down. So that's great, the, and that goes to for the people who are interested in the twenty year plan and in, in planning collaboratively with the utility to live in the community too. A lot of the folks, a couple of folks came up to me and were like, they're doing a plan? I saw that they were doing a plan at some point just a few days ago, what are we supposed to comment on? Did we, didn't they just, what are they release? What's the plan? And so, you know, I'm glad that there's going to be opportunity for those folks to engage now that there might actually be a plan to look at. And I hope that there will be collaborative opportunities to work with the community to lower bills long term for those who are struggling the most. There's these HIRA and homes programs coming out through the KCC in January that need broader facilitation and investment to go out into the community and figure out who needs these programs the most and get people's bills down who are struggling the most and have the highest energy burden. And I just want to thank all the other folks here who, who spoke and echo that the BPU board being on our side against the fees that the UG is trying to push onto the community, progressive taxation, energy burden, adding to this dangerous energy burden that, that community faces that we wouldn't, if, if the UG wouldn't put all these fees on us. And then the BPU can, can't do that unilaterally, as everyone here has said and knows. But they can work with the community, fight with the community, make sure the UG commission votes aren't going to back up some kind of threat against BPU and, and try to get those votes in the election, get those votes through public pressure, and, and just advocate with the community not to raise rates in order to increase energy burden for aggressive taxes on the people who can't pay. So appreciate your fighting with the community on that, working with the community in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone online wishing to speak tonight? Thank you. All right, we'll move into general manager staff reports. First, I'll, first item up is communication quarterly update. I'll ask Nick to come up and provide the board with a quick update on what we've been busy working on.
Good evening. My name is Nick Maron, I'm the communications coordinator here at BPU, and I'm going to provide an update on our department. So next slide, please, Rob. So before we start getting into more details, I kind of wanted to give a more general overview of our department. So at the highest level, our goal is to portray a positive image of the utility as a whole. How do we do that? We do that through developing and managing strategic communications throughout various channels, constantly collecting data and benchmarking and keeping up on industry trends. So on top of all of that, we kind of got our hands in a lot of different utility, other utility ongoings as well, such as playing a key role in internal communications, serving as a contact for open records requests, assisting in developing processes for crisis communications, and working in various capacities as a community liaison. So I'm going to drill down a little bit more as we move on to the next slides. So one of our biggest touch points for customers is our website, and that is something that this department manages, so we have to keep everything up to date and refresh it throughout the year. In quarter two of this year, we had over two hundred and twenty thousand page views from about ninety three thousand different users. The majority of people visiting our site are coming from the mobile end, so that's about seventy five percent, and our top pages visited are bill pay options and our contact us page. So year to date, we've had about twenty eight hundred users fill out our So year-to-date, we've had about twenty-eight-hundred users fill out our contact us form, and the majority of those are asking about, uh, customer service inquiries. So I have a couple of cool tools that I want to tell you about that we are working on and some that will be available in the future. So the first one is our website accessibility tool. That is available on the bottom-left side of the BPU.com website. It's that icon that's next to the little point there. And if you click on that, the, the goal of the accessibility tool is to make our site easier to navigate for people with disabilities or impairments. There's a really cool, uh, screen reader compatibility, uh, function on that, which really helps for some of our blind residents to navigate the website, but there's also stuff that helps people with ADHD or maybe are more prone to seizures by, you know, changing up the colors and lighting on our website. Another cool thing that we're working on now is adding additional languages to our website. And so right now, we just have a Spanish translation available. You can always use your Google Chrome to go and, you know, translate to other languages, but this will help by making it more easy to use. It'll be right there on the page. So we worked with the health department to identify, um, some other languages that are the most spoken in the county, and these are the ones we came up with. So within the next month or so, we'll be, have that optionality available on the website. Next slide, please. Something that my department also oversees is, uh, outage communications. So we've really tried to ramp this up over the past few months. The goal, as always, is to keep the public as informed as possible in these unfortunate scenarios, but we've made upgrades to, uh, developing processes internally that are pulling information from our electric ops teams and helping to disseminate within the utility. So for example, um, one thing that we've really helped on is getting information to customer service because in a lot of ways, they're that first touch point of communicator, are frontline communicators to the public in a lot of ways. And so keeping them as formed as possible during these, um, outage events is very important. But also this information coming from our electric ops division is really helping me to communicate to, via social media, our website and through the news media as well. One thing I, it's really important to me is expanding our social media coverage during these storms. So doing more frequent touchpoints throughout these events and then also sharing more relevant information such as, um, matters of our actual restoration process and helping to show cus, our customers what's going on out in the field as well by taking more pictures of damage and our alignment and where's out in the community doing work to really give a better scope overall, but we're working and dealing with out there. Two new features that I'm working on for outage communication. First one is our IVR messaging. So this is a message that we can add on to our, um, phone messaging system so that customers are getting more information directly when they call and feeling more heard immediately. The second one, and there's a few kinks I have to work out with this one still, but it's an alert on our outage map. So as you can see in the slide, there's a scrolling message that we can now add to the top of the outage map and a message that we can add within the widget on the left-hand corner. That kind of keeps us a little bit, uh, progressing towards, um, some of the other utilities in our region that have these tools already. Next slide, please. Um, our department also oversees public relations. As I mentioned in the previous slide, we definitely deal with media inquiries from time to time, but that is not just a one-way street. It's a two-way street. And so we are consistently putting out press releases, trying to get information out to the public via channels that we don't have access to. So if something gets picked up on the news, I know my mother, for example, um, she watches the news but doesn't have any social media at all. So this is something that would help her in a lot of ways. And also those press releases aren't just disseminated to the media. They're also going out to community organizations and local agencies so that they can pass it along to their constituents as well. Next slide, please. Um, another thing that, uh, our department focuses on, we're a lot of times community liaisons in a lot of different ways. I believe that the best ways to communicate with our public is by establishing relationships directly with our community. One cool way that we do that is by attending these Level Neighborhood Task Force meetings. So at these meetings, local agencies are able to meet with, uh, leaders of no, local, uh, neighborhood groups and give updates on important information that we feel is relevant to them and also allows our neighborhood groups to give us feedback and for us to take back to our, um, own organizations. So through these meetings, another cool thing that allows is for us to do some networking. And through this, um, Adam met with some folks over there at Roselle Development Association. Were we able to set up a time for some of our water engineers to go visit with them and talk about some disruption that was gonna happen in their area. So it's a really good place for collaboration there. Another thing that our department does is we are the liaisons for our summer youth program. So our summer youth program is a, is a old BPU program that we've been doing for a while, where we sponsor neighborhood group summer youth programs, mostly focusing on workforce and, uh, professional development, community and civic engagement as well. And some of the organizations that received funding for that this year are Turner Community Connection, Roselle Development Association, Northeast Optimist Club, Leavenworth Road Association, Caba Central Avenue, Armidale Renewal Association, Argentine Betterment and Groundworks. Next slide, please. I also want to talk a little bit about social media. So right now, we are on these four platforms, Facebook, X, Nextdoor and LinkedIn. So I kind of grouped that into two different categories. So the Facebook, X and Nextdoor are really are more public-facing platforms, whereas LinkedIn is more corporate-facing platform. And so you'll see the big growth there with LinkedIn. This was kind of an underutilized asset of ours up until of, before last year. And so we've seen a lot of really good growth there and a lot of really good engagement on that platform. Another thing I want to point out. So Nextdoor, so you'll see that number thirty-three thousand, a lot, is a lot higher than our followers elsewhere. So Nextdoor works a little different for us since we're an agency. So we are granted the ability to, uh, communicate directly with our entire service area. And so you don't really gain followers or lose followers like a normal social media platform, but it's been a really cool tool to have at our disposal to communicate with the public. On the right side, um, I included a couple of stats there, um, where it's a reach breakdown. Um, reach on Facebook is referring to a unique viewers to your content. So in twenty-twenty-four, we reached over forty-six thousand people with our content. You'll see it's about twenty-five percent higher than twenty-twenty-three. We can attribute some of that to the growth in our following, but I think that the big thing that we've done this year that's helped to attribute to that growth is to sort of focus more on showcasing our employees and the work that we're doing within the community. And that's really resonated with, um, folks on our social media platforms, so thus far this year. Next slide, please. Lastly, I will give a brief overview of some of the stuff we do in internal communications. So we produce a bi-monthly internal newsletter. Um, it's called Watson Water. It's kind of a fun thing. And so it started out as an email and kind of grew into a more interactive PDF. And now we're even doing some printing out of those for, uh, some of our employees who don't necessarily have direct access to their computers every day. And we also, our department plays a big part in the BPU Central, which is the, um, internet site, of, of course, assisting IT there. And so that's really all I have for you as far as our, uh, involvement. So any questions for me?
Hey, Nick.
Hey.
Um, so do you, are you guys are also instrumental in the release of the BPU connection on a quarterly basis, aren't you?
Yes, yes. I didn't get too much.
I forgot about that one, right? I mean, that's a big one. You guys have a lot of responsibility around that. So, and I know that that is an extremely informative document, very useful, particularly for, um, you know, the segments of our customer base that don't have access to or do not use computers regularly. Um, and, and I know that the content of that has increased exponentially, um, over certainly the last couple of years that I've seen it. So you guys are doing a great job with that. But just overall, um, and I know I've said this before, um, I've gotten messages back to you. I know I've gotten messages, you know, to the management team. Um, you know, your proactive approach, your team's proactive approach to, um, getting, you know, relevant messaging out to the community. It just has improved, I, I exponentially. You guys have done such a great job with that. And, you know, I mean, this is just a glimpse of what you guys do, and I know we have to, you know, um, put the metrics out there and show, look, we've improved it by this much. But just the relevance of the content you put out, how quickly you guys are putting out information in outages, um, it is just, you guys just do a tremendous job. So thank you guys very much for that. You're, you, uh, you, you are showing some of the best of BPU. So thank you. Thank you, Rose.
Any other questions? Thank you for your comments, Rose. Thank you. Next, I'll ask, uh, Jeremy Ashley come up and, uh, update the boat board on our intern program.
Thank you, Paul and Board. And while Rob gets that queued up, I'd like to take another just quick minute to just give some kudos to Nick. As you all know, Nick was put in a pretty tough position here a few months ago, and he picked up the baton, didn't complain, didn't ask, just got busy. And he's, he's done everything I've asked him to do, Bill's asked him to do, um, partnered with a lot of the other, um, division heads to, to do some things they were thinking about or trying to do or whatever. And certainly, um, has really worked well with, um, Abby since he's got put into her department. So he's done a heck of a job for us, and I just want to take a minute to, to recognize him for that too. Uh, but what I'm, I know last meeting, I think Dennis, um, had some information about the internship program and his update that he gave, um, to you. So I think tonight what we were gonna do is kind of highlight a little bit about what our actual interns did here at BPU. Um, kind of what, you know, what, um, we're looking forward to doing with the program going into next year. And then we have kind of undertaken as a team, a, um, initiative to develop a scholarship program and try to, uh, re- more, reward some more kids in our, um, District five hundred, District two oh three, Turner, uh, Bonner, all of the, the kids that are in, uh, Wyandotte County School Systems and to try to help them with their, uh, educational pursuits and hopefully attract them to jobs here within our community like here at BPU where they can, uh, be a part of their community and, and give back. And, um, so with that, Rob, we can go to the next one. So this is a little bit about how we went about coming up with the program and the objectives we had. And a couple of three, four years ago, uh, Darren McNew at Electric Ops and I kind of just hammered Bill with, hey, can we resurrect this thing? And, um, try to get some people interested in staying here, coming here, working here with us. Uh, kids that were familiar with our community, we, we sometimes have a, a little bit of a challenge recruit, recruiting certain skillsets and things. And so we thought this would be a good way to get right back out into our community with, um, kids in our school system who are familiar with Kansas City, Kansas, know, uh, what BPU is or have some familiarity with BPU. And how can we provide them with an opportunity that maybe we can harvest a little bit later when they finish their education or their trade programs? Uh, and, and have them come to work here for us. So, um, through that, we, we kind of started small electric operations. There has been interns all over BPU for a long time. Kind of hit and miss sporadically. We never really had a, a, a kind of a dialed-in program. So that's what we kind of were challenged to do. And, um, through that, we wanted to provide them with a lot of, um, electric utility experience. Um, and that was kind of the early parts of the programs because that's just all we were working with. And, and this year, you'll see a little bit later that we've expanded that out, um, into the power plant. And we've got some, um, plans coming up too, to try to, to push it out even further to some other jobs here, uh, in the, in the company too. But the other thing that we want to do is not just bring somebody in and have them spend the summer with us, but what value could they bring back to us through the work we were having them do? That maybe we didn't have a resource to get to. We didn't have just the time to get to, but it was certainly things that were within their skillset that we could have them work on and, and be a valuable, uh, uh, return on what we were, were doing with them over the summer. And then ultimately, how many can we attract back summer after summer? Or maybe even higher after they graduate or finish their apprenticeship or what, whatever it is they're pursuing. So that's kind of the, what we're looking to do with the program. Rob? So, um, this year, we had two interns, uh, we, at, at electric operations. They both worked in the, um, distribution engineering, uh, department. And then we had another one work in the substation department. And we had a fourth one go work with Don and his team down at the Neeriman Power Plant. That was the new part that we hadn't done since we kind of started revamping the program. Um, worked really well. We had four total. Um, all of them were from KCK high schools, um, all of them going to college in the state of Kansas. We had a fifth applicant that was from out of town, and, um, she ultimately ended up taking a opportunity that was closer to where she lived. So, um, Darren and his team, and I'm not sure if Philip Brown helped him as well, but they reached out to the community college. And we started inquiring with them about, hey, how can we have access to your dorms during the summer? What if we get a kid that we're really excited about that is from out of town? And how can we give them an affordable option for living so that they don't come up here and spend the whole summer with us? And they don't, number one, they don't make any money because they have to spend it all living up here, right? And then they go, they go back with their experience, which is good, but that's just part of the program. So we've, we've started some discussions with the junior college. They're open to letting us have, um, some access to, to part of that during the summers. And that's, we hope, is gonna help us expand our program in the future as well. Well, um, with other engineers, they did work amongst each other a little bit too, but they, they sort of had a mentor, if you will. Go for the whole program time, which is important. Engineers are evaluating what, what those folks are doing. And hey, do we want to try to get them back here next year? Do we want to try to hire them when they graduate? So, um, we had them work on some special projects. We also had Darren and his team applied this year for a project that they were gonna have in, uh, engineering intern complete through the deed program at APPA, and we actually were rewarded the money. So that award helped us fund that particular intern, which was the first time I've known that we, we have pursued um, any funding and got it for something like that. And then one of the other things we wanted to do is not just get them exposure to where they were working, but we wanted to show them that there's a lot of other different, um, parts of, of BPU. So they, they all got to go down to the power plant. Um, they all go over to our Energy Control Center. And I believe Steve, a couple of them got to go up and, and take a look at the, uh, water treatment plant, which is gonna try to be an area, uh, where we attract another intern next year is how can we help, um, the water team, both in distribution or engineering and at, at the power or at the water treatment plant? Because they do have a number of, uh, engineers and other specialized positions at that plant that we could use this program to maybe pipeline some people to as well. Next slide, Rob. So this is our, um, four from this summer. And actually, the gentleman on the far right, Ricky, it was his second summer with us. Um, fortunate to have him back, that he was able to get right back in the swing of things. Um, Ricky goes to Baker University there, and he plays football. And they have a co-op program with, uh, University of North Dakota. So he's actually able to go pursue what he likes to do with his football. Um, and then he gets to take most of his classes there at Baker, and he has to do some co-opping virtually and small in-person, uh, portions up with North Dakota. The other three, um, they all attend Kansas State University. Next slide, Rob. Uh, yeah, so real quick before, what we tried to do, um, we tried to get the interns down here to come in front of you and talk about their experience. Um, just due to some other, uh, agenda items that came up that you all had to undertake, we had to push this out a little ways and knowing that Dennis was gonna be presenting on it a little bit. We went back to them and asked them if they could just record a quick, um, clip about their experience this summer, uh, so that you could hear that from them.
All right. Hello, my name's Kate Zapica.
I'm Ricky Brown.
I go to Kansas State University and I attend Baker University.
And I am a first-year intern at BPU.
This is my second year.
And we both worked in distribution, uh, this summer. And I could say for the both of us, we learned a lot. We got to do a lot of field visits and we even had our own projects that we got to work on. Mine was a capacitor controller project where we were trying to retrofit existing Mine was a capacitor controller project where we were trying to retrofit existing cap controllers onto older poles or just place the new cap controllers onto newer poles.
And as a second-year intern, I can attest that this year has been much better than last year. As I also got my own personal project that we didn't get to do last year. This year, I got to work on vacuum fault interrupters. Just how it protects our backbone here at BPU, how we serve the customers in a safe and protected scheme. We got to work with a bunch of engineers. I'm sure everyone in this building, yeah, we've worked with everyone in this building. And we're just thankful that they had time out their day and time out their hard job to really give to us and give us knowledge and feedback.
So yeah, just like Ricky said, we had a great summer here. We definitely look forward to hearing back in the future if there's any open positions. And thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you guys again.
So we've got a little delay in our video. This is Rob Nice. I think first time I'm trying to do it this way. So this is the intern that worked actually for Don down at the power plant this summer here.
Hi, I'm Colin Batliner. I spent my summer working at Neiman Creek Power Station. And I just want to say how thankful I am for the opportunity to be there and for everyone there, the engineers especially, that helped me out and gave me a lot of knowledge that I didn't have to begin with. I'd learned a lot that I didn't know. I did some programming and sending alarms to the control room with our controls engineer there, Hoi Hee Ho. And I did, I learned a lot about the environmental systems around the plant and ran an arc flash simulation in the E cap software for one of our electrical engineers and putting, inputting all 252 motors from the plant into that software. And I just want to say again, I'm thankful for the opportunity and I'm glad to have spent my summer here at BPU.
And then I think lastly, we will have undeniably the best head of hair at the BPU. I'm a little jealous, but this is the fellow that worked in our Substation Group with Scott Paramore and, and his team.
Hi, I'm Devin. I got to work as an intern in Substation Engineering. And I just really wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to be here because in my opinion, the amount of responsibility and the amount of impact and like, yeah, it's just the best word for it, the impact that we got to make as interns and actually get to see this impact come to fruition and see the projects that we've made would come to fruition has been amazing. And it's something that I don't think I really would have got to see many places. So I'm just, I'm super grateful to have the internship that I did. In substations, I got to work, um, learning system protection. I got to learn about three-phase power. And I actually ended up getting to finalize my internship with a project, building a relay testing rack so we can simulate substations and how they would react in adverse circumstances, which really just wrapped everything I learned just right together. And it's just amazing because there, like, like I said, there's really not many places that I would have got to see a project like this actually come to fruition, wrapping everything I've been learning together in one hole that's actually going to be beneficial for years to come. So it's just been amazing. And I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to have this internship and the opportunity to be here and work with you guys.
So that, that's the last, the last video and the first video are really good examples about them getting to actually do some meaningful work that we're going to use after they're gone. Huge benefit to us, but this is the bigger benefit right here. So if you look back at when, when these fellows actually did their presentation to our team, when they were winding down this summer, there was 10 engineers sitting in the, in the conference room. Five of them were former interns. So the investment is paying off. They're kids from our community, from our school systems that know what it is to already live here. We don't have to fight a lot of the challenges that we fight with a lot of, of our recruiting sometimes. So super grateful that you all fund this and budget this because it, it really is paying us back. And so we're trying to find ways constantly to work better with HR in, in the job fairs and career fairs that we go to at the colleges. Steve sends people from his engineering team. Darren sends people from his engineering team. We're going to look to expand that out to folks maybe in the finance department, folks in the IT department, and really see how much more work we can do with kids that are just right here in our own community. Next slide, please, Rob. So that's really it, but we do have some other information to share. I didn't put it in the presentation. It's, it's something that Bill had challenged us to work on and, and we had done with the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation and to start a scholarship program. The important thing for us, these four kids that you saw, we actually talked to them. Two of them would like to come back and work this winter over their winter break. So we're getting ready to engage them on that. But we also engaged them on, would you be willing to come back again next summer? And if they can make some kind of commitment to that, we'd like to help them with a scholarship to, for this coming school year in exchange for them slating that, hey, we'll come back. We're going to get people with experience here, familiar with our systems, our communications here in our community. So it's just one more piece of efficiency for us. And then Bill has the other information about what we've done with our scholarship program. So we, we worked with the, with the scholarship application. And one of the things we were trying to do, and we tried to do here today on a number of fronts, is get rid of our biases about that. A number of the team sat together. We partnered with those folks, came up with the application, turned the process over to the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation worked directly with the high school counselors here in KCK Wyandotte County. And we received 10 applicants from seven different high schools. But only five of them met our criteria that they had to be in a STEM program. So of the, of the five that met the criteria, we've got one from Ward High School, one from Washington High School, two from Wyandotte High School, and one from Piper. So those folks in the coming weeks will be contacted by BPU and the Foundation to, you know, receive their award. And, and, and we'll probably try to talk to them, too, about, don't forget to apply for our internship programs that we have. So that's good news. That's been a long time coming. And the team worked hard on it. And we're going to get some of these people back into our system, hopefully.
Jeremy, were they, all of the summer ones were engineering majors?
Yes.
And, but for the criteria for the scholarship, they just had to be in a STEM program?
The criteria for the scholarship, they have to be, they have to be a KCK high school. And they have, their, folks have to be, whoever their guardian is, have to be a BPU account holder. And they have to be pursuing a STEM program.
And Jeremy, that application process for the scholarship is on BPU's website, is it not?
There's some communications on the website and on the Community Foundation's website. My eyes were open to how many scholarships are out there. A few years back when my son went to school, we started Googling that thing. And it's, it's really overwhelming. So this was a way for us to direct them to get this directly to the high school counselors, that we were making them aware of the opportunity that we have here for them. You know, and we're already familiar with them and their school system.
Right. And, and so, you know, using the Greater Kansas City, you know, Community Foundation, you know, folks in the nonprofit world are very familiar with what that organization is because they do so much good work with so much foundation money across, across Kansas City, the metropolitan area. So, so bringing them in to sort of do the screening and actually, you know, pick the applicants, ultimately pick the applicants that, that qualify for this, to me is, you know, obviously a step in the right direction. And, you know, I think that speaks volumes to how serious, you know, BPU is with respect to, you know, these types of programs, right? So the scholarship program and, and the internship program and, and, and things we're doing along those lines. You know, we had an opportunity and you were at the meeting when we had our community engagement meeting with the community ambassadors. We talked a lot about water that night. And, you know, we, we took it as an opportunity, you know, to, to talk with the ambassadors about, you know, how technical it is to run water department in a city. And, you know, this is, I think, showcasing how technical it is to run a power company in a city. And, you know, gosh, I know a couple of years ago, we, we had some discussions about how difficult it is to find qualified, in the case, I think we were talking about substation engineers who want to live in KCK. Very difficult, have to have them, but difficult to find. And, and, you know, the previous internships where you guys have been able to place some of these folks and the exposure you're given to the four interns we had over this summer is amazing. And, you know, despite the fact that, you know, three of these fellows go to K-State, Dennis, I, I, you know, no, I'm kidding. Obviously, they have an outstanding, you know, impeccable engineering program. I mean, we're really lucky that, you know, I mean, this is almost, I mean, to me, this is, you know, this almost looks like, you know, an apprentice program, right? You know, all for professionals that, that you guys are putting, you know, a lot of time and effort into. And, you know, I know that this board allows, you know, some of this to happen through its budget. But, you know, what this winds up turning into for the future of this community is just outstanding, in my opinion. And I, I thank, you know, BPU management for its commitment to these things because it, it's, we have learned, it's difficult, you know, to, to place people who are here in KCK. And you guys are really starting from the ground up in, you know, in our local high schools to find these, these folks and, and to follow them into their, you know, their college career. So sorry for being so, I had no questions, but, but I really just, I mean, this is, you know, again, this highlights how technical it is to run a, a power and a water company in a city. And, you know, the fact that you guys are able to, to showcase that tonight, I think, is, is just great. So thank you guys very much for, for the presentation.
One of the things we're trying to do is get them a broader exposure, too. So we asked them this year, you know, there's one that has worked in Distribution. And it's like, hey, I'd like to try out the plant. So we're trying to figure out how between the teams to best facilitate that. You know, a lot of people don't know, you talk about the water system, the electric system. Steve Nurshel's team has electrical engineer on it to handle all the controls and relaying at the, at the Water Treatment Plant. So there's needs for all of them all over our company. And it's, let's not, how do we best get them that broad exposure? So we don't pigeonhole them into something they're not interested in, and then they ultimately leave us.
I just echo a lot of the praise that Rose offered, you know. One of the challenges, I think, in running the organization is there's trade-offs to most things, right? We want to have the best services for everyone. We want to keep the rates as low as possible. And sometimes some of those things are in conflict. This is a tremendous example of something that just feels like a win all the way around. And with that in mind, I guess, long-term, is there a sweet spot of, you know, if we could find enough folks, is there a magic number of interns we'd like to have a few years down the road?
When I look at just my groups, I think we could, we could handle eight. But that doesn't count. Maybe there's something that could go in the HR department. Maybe there's something that could go in the accounting department. Maybe there's something to go in the IT department. So as we get better at the program, that's what we hope to be, to be doing is getting a touch point in all of those places.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And just to add to that, we had an environmental engineer that worked this summer as an intern that was very successful with Ingrid's group. And we, we currently have an IT intern that we just brought on as well that we're really excited about. So those technical roles is where we're looking for the interns. And yeah, it's been successful. We hope to continue that.
Thank you.
I didn't even realize we had an environmental intern. But, and, and we have, I mean, the team has done a lot of hard work. Bill supported us, working with Dennis's team, getting to the career fairs, job fairs. Darren's engineers are going, Philip Brown's going. Philip Brown actually went in some classes last year, I think, in Manhattan and sat in the class, talked with the instructor, talked with the kids in the class about his, his career and how he got to where he's at. So it's all good stuff for all of our people and our exposure, getting our name out there to, to get people back here.
I think Rose hit on a, a really good point about how technical our utilities are and what it takes to run a utility. And I think a lot of our public is, really takes a lot of that for granted. And I don't know if our website highlights any of that at all, having not looked at our website in, in a few months. But I think it's really important that some of that is known so that people can really see what it takes to run a utility. It's, it's not, it's, I mean, I was, I was, even as, coming in as a board member, I was shocked at the many facets of, of involved in the running of a utility. And so I was amazed. And I think that, that it would open the eyes of a lot, a lot of people if they, if they could just see that and observe that.
Well, we'll get Nick to do a day in the life of. He can do stories and videos about a lot of our different roles we have here. That'd be, that'd be pretty neat.
Well, and, and one thing, just wrap this up, Rose, that I want to hit on is, if, if I recall correctly, and I may not recall correctly, so Lori, keep me honest here, Bill, somebody. The amount of money that the board allocates in a nearly $400 million budget of this utility for these two programs, I'm confident is a rounding error. I'm not sure it's more than $100,000. I, it, it could be far less. I, I don't know the number, but it's.
It's, it's less. It's, it's about 75, I believe.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And, and to get, to get potentially, and I mean, we seen what we, we seen what we've hired in the past, right? To get this long-term investment, you know, the ROI on this, like, I, seriously, I don't think we could put a price tag on it, right? So.
One other thing I want to add to is we're, we're working with the, we've had a conversation with the Employee Foundation and haven't talked quite yet with the Culture Club about when these interns are here for the summer, get them involved in our community. Let them understand who our community is, who our city is, who our residents are, and learn more about things outside or just working at BPU. And then, you know, hopefully they'll have a greater appreciation about Wyandotte County, KCK, you know, through the relationships they build there. And, and then hopefully that'll help entice them and want to come back even more, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, I'll ask Steve Nurshel to come up.
Steve?
Yeah, I won't say anything, I'm still your thunder, Steve.
What's that?
I won't say anything else, but still your thunder.
Okay. All good. You're going to do that mouse thing? So again, I, I just want to take the time to thank you guys for allowing me to come back. I know it's been a number of years since I've done a presentation on the Partnership for Safe Water. But this year was kind of unique. We received a 15 Years Director Award. And I will actually talk a little bit more about that in the end. But I wanted to just kind of walk you through what the Partnership for Safe Water is. It's an actual component of AWWA, which is American Water Works. And there are several groups that all work together in collaboration. And it basically was established in 1995, and it was to address cryptosporidium. And that is a small osist, which is a pathogen that can make you very, very sick. And I kind of listed just a, a quick fact. And Milwaukee, Wisconsin, if you, if you think back about when that happened, it happened like in 1993. And roughly 400,000 people were infected with cryptosporidium. So Milwaukee, Wisconsin had two water treatment plants. And I believe it was the south plant that had a breakdown in their filtration. And it allowed this cryptosporidium, which is somewhat immune to chlorine. So we always think if chlorine can kill pretty much everything, but it can't. This has a hardened shell and it was able to evade that. It worked its way through the city's filtration process. And it went into, and, and it made its way out into the distribution system. And upwards of 100 people died. I mean, the true cost of that incident I mean, the true cost of that incident, it's, it's a fascinating story if you ever want to Google it. But the, the utility winded up spending, you know, close to a billion dollars just in regaining the co- the confidence of their communities that, you know, so, uh, needed that drinking water. And, uh, and they had gotten behind on some of their capital improvements. And there was just a, a lot of things that went into that. And so, uh, they've come out of it really good. They're part of the partnership now. And, and also this new organization came from that. So, uh, next slide. So, again, the partnership is a voluntary effort between seven drinking water utilities. And right now, there's about 250 utilities out there that are actually in that kind of award phase. Uh, and then the goal of the, of the partnership is really to protect health. You know, when you put in these, you, you address, you kind of address some of the things that are put out there by the partnership. It, it winds up being a lot more stringent than what current regulations are. So, next slide. So, again, uh, just like, you know, following up with that, the result is the production of delivery of superior qua- uh, water quality. We're going to talk about turbidity as we go through this. But again, the partnership, I too should mention that it, it's kind of morphed a little bit. Where originally was designed and geared towards this treatment facilities. Now, it's also out there to distribution systems as well. And I believe they've even gotten into the wastewater field as well. So, uh, y- you know, I can only see that it'll continue to grow. Next slide. So, here, uh, here this slide, it just, you know, there's 265 utilities. Again, I mentioned 250 right now that are in the award phase. There's about 265 facilities that are actually in partnering in this program and trying to optimize their treatment processes. And so, with that treatment program, again, I'm, I'm going to focus on treatment because distribution's completely separate from this. But the treatment program is four phases. Phase one, commitment. Phase two, baseline data collection. Phase three, self-assessment. And that's where you would receive this director award. And then phase four, which is a completely optimized system, which you would receive a precedence award. It's an optional phase. But just to note, this year, BPU was a recipient of the 15-year director award. And, and when I say 15 years, it shouldn't be taken lightly. Because if you think back on the date of when it was established in 1995, that means that we have actually been part of it since the begin- you know, halfway of its lifetime. So, 30 years ago is when this kind of took place. And the awards that I'm aware of right now, next year would be, you know, where they would start awarding some of these utilities that jumped on right at the beginning, that are now in their 30th year. So, this year though, at the conference, the 25 was the, you know, the most that anybody would be recognized for because they only do it in five-year increments. Next slide. So, you can ask yourself, why is optimization important? Optimization's important in everything we do. I mean, it's, uh, you want your car to be optimized. Optimize your car, you need, you know, good tires, you need, you know, lots of things to make it run perfect. So, water treatment plant's the same way. So, what happens when you optimize? You improve your water quality leaving the plant. I mean, uh, it's basically public health that we're talking about. I feel that after all these years of doing it, that this next bullet is the most important. And that's the teamwork and communication among plant employees. It can't be just driven from management because operators run the plant 24/7. And operators have to, but operators need goals. They need goals to, you know, achieve these things. And it's how we measure performance. And so, it's a team effort. It really is. Not only is the operator's part of it, but also the maintenance staff. Because the maintenance staff have to oversee the analytical equipment that measures these things that we're talking about. And then, uh, you know, another big one is it provides consistent treatment. If, you know, if you have one operator that comes in and they're operating at seven to three shift and the next operator at three to 11 operates completely different, then you kind of have the wild, wild west going on. Nobody's actually following any kind of parameters. Everybody's just operating knowing, hey, this, we're meeting the regulations, so what's the big deal? Well, that's what's good about the partnership. It has specific goals in mind that we work towards. And then there's also, you know, it provides some positive recognition, recognition for the public. I mean, again, I don't think sometimes the public realizes just how much goes into producing water. But when you've, when you're, you know, you're signatory to the partnership, you're actually, which I'll, you'll see in a few slides. You're actually going way beyond what regulations actually ask you to do. And then, another important thing is the increased confidence. When we meet with our state regulators or EPA, they, they look at us and say, hey, you guys are already going way beyond. And so, if we were to have some kind of upset, they can look back at our records and say, hey, this, you know, they're already, they've been doing what's, you know, more, uh, going way and beyond what's required to start with. So, you know, we can, they can send it, sometimes they're a little bit more lenient, but I've also found that they're more engaging. So, uh, just for me, example, KDHE sometimes will reach out to me and ask me questions about certain things. And I think that's kind of neat, you know, that our state regulators actually look to us. And, uh, you know, in the last couple of years, I've been part of their regulatory, uh, committee for operator certification, which is kind of a big deal. But I don't know of any other, you know, utility has a person on it other than myself as far as like a BPU. I mean, there's no water one, or, and so I kind of think it's neat. And I kind of, you know, play it back to some of this. Next slide. So, again, the treatment program, it focuses on, uh, pretty much treat, uh, uh, treatment plants that are defined by either groundwater under the influence with filtration or surface water. And just a quick explanation is surface water plant would be like, for example, taking water directly out of the river or taking it out of the lake. Groundwater is where we fall and that is because the Missouri River influences our collector wells. We still take water out of the Missouri River and, you know, uh, but it's actually through the aquifer itself. So, it's doing a lot of the, um, prefiltration through natural riverbed media. And then it applies a different barrier approach. And, and just below it, you can see those things. And we're going to talk about turbidity because, uh, that's a big, you know, component of the partnership. So, uh, when you apply this multi-barrier approach that, you know, partnership really stresses, is that you're looking at not only like your filtration, what's the most important, what's finished water, but you're also looking at your raw water turbidity, your settled water turbidity, your filtered water turbidity. And then where all the filters combine, uh, before they enter the distribution system. So, you're actually working to optimize all those different areas. Next slide. So, now we're going to talk about turbidity. It's a measurement. Uh, it's too hard to say. It's, uh, but basically what it is, it's, it's a laser light, an LED light. And when I first started, it was, uh, basically an incandescent light. And it's a light source that actually shines through the water. And it, what it does is it picks up the very smallest micron particulate. And it looks at that. It doesn't, it can't tell you, is it bad? It can't tell you, is it good? But it can tell you that it's a size that's of concern. Meaning that like the, uh, cryptosporidium osis, I believe it ranges around a seven micron size. Somewhere around that area. So, when you're talking micron, you're talking very, very small particulate. But we do know that be based on cryptosporidium, that if it makes it through, you know, that's, uh, small material makes it through, it could potentially be bad to make people sick. So, that's what the whole thing is based around. And so, when you look at this graph here, it's basically the EPA says, hey, you water systems out there because they are the governing regulator. And then you have your state level. But the state level always, uh, they can never be less stringent than what the EPA is. But the EP, the EPA says, hey, you can't send any water out there into the system that is above a 1.0 NTU. So, it's pretty small what we're talking about. And then you can look at what the EPA's 95th percentile, which is, uh, much lower than that. It's a point three. And that, what that means is that you can, you can exceed that point three, but only in 5% of your samples. So, for example, we take roughly 96 measurements a day. Every 15 minutes, the water is timestamped for turbidity. And we're looking at it and we're saying, okay, it has to be below point three. And if any of them, you know, go above that, they would count towards that 5%, which is only about four measurements. So, you could get in trouble really quick. And if you wind it up, then there's other rules that fall like on, based on the filters. But over on the far right, you can see what the partnership goal is. And that is at the 95, uh, fifth percentile, it's only point one. So, you can see that's pretty dang stringent. That's like more than half of what the actual rule is. So, point one NTU is what that goal is. And so, what's good about that is that we can now say, okay, operators, this is the goal we want to achieve. Nothing, but, nothing above point one NTU leaves this plant. That's our goal. And so, otherwise you could say, an operator could say, hey, I'm really, I'm right there at point three. I'm meeting the regulations. So, what, you know, what's the worry, you know? I'm still making it. But this gives a goal and it allows us to go back in this report, as you'll see, to collect the data. Robert, thank you. Yeah, let me skip ahead here. So, what's involved once you, uh, sign up to do the partnership? Basically, it starts out with commitment. I listed that earlier. But the utility would submit a plan and they would say, hey, we want to participate in the Partnership for Safe Water. We would put in an application, we pay a fee. And then we get decided, you know, it's decided whether we can join. And then we, they would look at us, are we a groundwater, under the influence, all the criteria? And then we would have to start the baseline data. And that's the really probably the biggest component of this whole thing. You know, we have to collect the data anyway because we have to give it to our state regulators monthly. So, you know, why not, you know, do this? I mean, I, I often find it, uh, you know, why doesn't more utilities take, um, you know, wo- work towards this goal? Uh, and then, then there's the self-assessment portion. And that's where utilities would basically form a plan, uh, kind of, uh, put together what are our goals. And then it's going to develop into a whole narrative report. And that port, report would be completed. And then it'll be actually looked at by a lot of industry experts. And then it's what makes you eligible for the director's award. And the director's award, again, is awarded annually, but it's only, you only get, uh, recognized at the national conference every five years. Uh, and then optimized. So, uh, again, this is the phase that's kind of optional. What this does is it actually, you, you wind up having to collect even more data and you have to pay more money. And it, it's just, I think that we could do it. I, I believe that, but we've really went through a lot of, uh, changes in staffing. And we're trying to get, work our way towards getting some, um, you know, some of our own performance goals in place. And then we'll probably pursue this. Next slide. So, this is the data. And I think Rob made it so I got a blue pointer here. So, I'm going to try to, um, kind of show you some of the, the key things to take away from this. This is our raw water, uh, report. And you can notice that it's from June of '22 to June of '23. So, we'll be doing our new report from '23 to '24. It's not done yet. Cause we, we just finished June. We'll be putting it together. But some of the things you look at is over here, our annual, uh, raw water turbidity. And you can see that's 1.39. I know for you in the back, it's probably difficult to see. But that's our raw water turbidity average. And so, what that means is that it's 1.39 NTU as an average throughout the year. The, and that's pretty good. I mean, remember, the goal is, uh, one. You know, that would be like the maximum you could send out. So, when you think about that, we're starting now with some pretty dang good water with those collector wells. So, you know, uh, if it was the Missouri River, we could, we could expect this to be like maybe sometimes 100 after a rainstorm. So, um, it's just, I, I just wanted to show you the average on this slide for our raw water. Next slide. This is our sedimentation basin. So, this, you'll see the average down here at 2.41. So, it's higher. And you know why? That's where we start our treatment process. That's where we're adding chemicals and we're removing these particulates to try to drop, you know, as the treatment process goes through, we're trying to drop out these materials like iron and manganese. And, and that's the, you know, the big part of our, uh, treatment process. And so, with that, you can expect the turbidity to go up because that's part of that process. Something else to look at here is this graph that I want you to kind of look at is that typically we know from running our plant that our most difficult challenges come in the winter, when the water's cold. The chemicals don't react as well. We wind up seeing sort of turbidity increases. And, uh, what you would see is like, in this case, like typically you would see the raw water start to, to go up. Then you see your settled water go up. And so, again, all of these things we put goals to, as you'll see later on. But the, you can see that this jives with what I was saying as far as like, uh, starting in about September, you can see that the turbidity is starting to go up. And then as we hit like March and April, it starts to come, come back down. And this is pretty much cyclical of our plan. So, next slide. And then the finished water is the most important because this is where the entire partnership is around. Is not, you know, exceeding point one NTU. And so, down here on the average, you'll see this point zero two. So, remember the goal, and the partnership goal is point one. And here we are, a whole digit difference, you know, point oh two. So, you can see our water is very, very good, uh, leaving the plant. And then if you, and you know, just, just to be fair, I want to go out here, down here and show you the max. So, the yearly max was point two five. So, that means that we're still, all year long, we never produced water that was above that point three NTU. So, all year, out of all the thing, all the treatment we did, our operators did, was able to manage by keeping it below the, the EPA's goal. So, I think that's very, very impressive, uh, when you look at the data. And I know it's a lot to look at. Uh, so, next slide. So, in that report, what we do is it's, you basically would, you know, you write, you're always writing past. So, uh, so one of the things that you'll do is you, you would basically talk about the treatment challenges you had. Maybe you had some plant things going on, processes. Maybe you had some power outages. Maybe you had like weather events. We've had weather events that have changed the data such as that February event when it got super cold. We've had like when runoff is really high in the snow. You know, I want to say three or four years ago, Missouri River had many, um, you know, they made the news many times on their turbidity being, uh, too high that was going out to the public. And as a result, they were, uh, you were having to do some boil orders in some areas. So, again, the partnership is always delayed. And then you, you, in, in this narrative, we talk about our staffing challenges, you know? Because that's one thing that is familiar to these people is that water treatment plants across the country have difficulty with staffing. So, and then we talk again about treatment challenges. Did you incur any violations? Did you meet your stated goals? And, and this thing isn't to beat you up. If you didn't meet a goal, you just got to explain why you didn't meet it. And do you, did you make any treatment process changes, some of your current operational goals and next goals for next year? Next slide. And then our performance enhancing goals. So, these would be things that we would list as like, we're going to have training programs for incoming operators. That next bullet is something that, you know, Steve and, uh, we've been working on implementing some new operator schedules. And Jeremy, we've all worked together. And really, the operator's got a really good schedule right now. And we're, we're getting very close to having two operators a shift. And we've reduced one shift, which was probably the most difficult with those sleep patterns. So, I, I mean, we're, we're meeting these goals and these things are measurable. So, we can say every year, hey, we add another goal to it. Did, did we meet it? How are we doing? So, and as you go through this list, you check them off and then you write, you know, what, you know, what all, uh, what all you did with that. Next slide. Operational goals, again, these are really important. So, if you say you're going to do some, you need to really do it. Operational goals, again, these are really important. So if you say you're going to do some, you need to really do it. So again, meeting that point one into you, uh, ninety-nine percentile, we easily meet that. Uh, as you saw, we were like point oh two. Uh, achieve our monthly filter influencer bodies at or below two. Well, you can see it based on that last report, we didn't meet that goal. That was a, that's a challenge one that we've challenged many times. We've met it on some years, but this year we didn't meet it. Uh, so we have to try harder next year. Uh, achieve annual monthly raw water turbidity at one point seven five. Or if you go back and look at our raw water, it was one point three nine. So we met it. Um, achieve average monthly raw water turbidity is November through April. We actually was really close on that one. I can't remember if we made it fully. Uh, but again, these are just goals that we're, we're holding ourselves accountable to. Uh, and then maintaining, uh, you know, no regulatory uh, compliance treatment violations. Um, next slide. And so, uh, kind of, and then I want to also say, I, I forgot to mention earlier. But when I talk about that number of two sixty-five, two fifty uh, utilities that are kind of two hundred and fifty utilities. I want you to keep in mind that Kansas alone has over eight hundred water utilities. So when you think about that, there's only two hundred and fifty utilities in the United States that's part of this. We're, we're pretty rare. We're a small group. I know Water One is doing it, but they're behind us. Uh, so they're not going to be able to catch us as long as we keep doing it. So I think that's pretty neat. Uh, but I think that, you know, it's, it just says that we're going far and beyond what's required out there. And when you think there's eight hundred utilities in the state of Kansas and there's only two hundred and fifty that are participating, that are trying to achieve better water quality. I mean, I think that's pretty impressive. And then what, and then, you know, this is another big story. This is like, uh, you know, this is all the awards that were offered, they fit on one sheet of paper. And up there in that uh, one section, there's four utilities under that fifteen-year director award and B P U is one of them. And I think the city of Springfield, Missouri was in that same category. So I, uh, I know that we often compared ourselves to them as well on certain things. Uh, but again, this year, uh, attending ACE was pretty neat. And uh, it was in uh, California and myself and Steve Green and David Haley. We were all able to go and go up there and receive it. And it, you know, you could, when we sat around the table with some of the other utilities, I mean, it's a, it's an accomplishment to be proud of for a utility. And again, I can't say that, um, you know, I'm responsible for all this, because I'm not. It's, it takes a lot of teamwork and I really appreciate my operators and maintenance for, especially my operators. I mean, I, you know, they work unsupervised all night, twenty, you know, and they're here twenty-four seven. And they're, they're following these things and they, you know, they're doing a great job and, and the data shows it. So uh, if they, you know, they do something that gets outside of it, they're quick to report it and say, hey, this is what happened. And I just think, you know, give my staff a lot of credit for that. And with that, pretty much think that was it. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't, I don't have any questions, um, but I did want to um, add special emphasis to how particularly proud we should be. And certainly I was, um, as a new attendee. And to look at all the other uh, utilities that we have and to learn as we did. And to hear in some what was accomplished. I forgot how many years it was. They're different, and you just said it, but it was like fifty, there were different years.
And there's, so the max this year that they did was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, but that we here at the utility.
Were fifteen.
Would be at fifteen. And um, uh, it was, um, it was quite an honor. It really was. And I was very proud to have been a part of that and uh, with you and with Steve that was, was, was there. It was, um, it was good. And we were commended or our utility was commended by many of our peers uh, from around, uh, around the country there in Anaheim. And so congratulations again to what you and what Steve have done to, um, to bring that recognition to us.
Um, so, so Steve, when we uh, chose to participate in this, um, we obviously had to commit to participate in this, right? So that's, that's part of your thing. And, and we applied for it and we submitted fees. Is that a one-time thing or do we submit those fees on a regular basis?
Annually.
Annually?
I believe it's, uh, I want to, I think it's fourteen hundred dollars annually.
Fourteen hundred dollars annually for us to to be basically commit to have safe water.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's really cheap. And I mean, what you're doing, again, all the work's on the utility.
Sure.
And
Right.
Really what you're kind of paying for is the staff for that partnership group to uh, basically provide the data tools, because that's data that they, they've made this software. And then they also, you know, uh, give goals and things, optimization things that utilities can work towards. So they, they provide uh, feedback. And typically what they look like in their, in their industry, uh, is, you know, there might be other utilities, uh, that are, you know, looking at our data. And um, so, yeah, I mean, it's a cheap fee, fourteen hundred dollars. And, you know, and, and like I said, the biggest part, the biggest challenge is, is just getting everybody going down the road. But once you do that, we're fifteen years in, and I mean, it's, it's super easy now. I mean, other than writing the report and getting the data all.
Well, and, and a- again, this is, this is a rounding error in a four hundred million dollar budget, right, on an annual basis. And um, I don't believe, at least I'm, I'm gathering from what I'm hearing in this presentation tonight. We are not employing anyone on the water side of the house specifically dedicated to this. This is on top of their regular daily functions of, of running uh, a water, uh, a municipal water utility.
That's right.
Is that right?
Yep, so.
So there's no additional labor costs, there's no additional overhead, there's no additional, we just, this is part of folks' job at this point.
Yes, I, I actually participated in it all, all of the years. And annually I typically write the report, but I'm working towards passing that off now. I've got a couple of people that are work, doing the data. And then I kind of help them with the data and I hopefully by next year, it's being passed off for somebody else to write the report. So, yeah.
Well, and, and again, I mean, this is something that, you know, we, we touched upon this in our community engagement meeting. But, you know, just the technical expertise it, it takes um, to have a water utility that provides safe drinking water, safe water to our community. And the technical expertise it requires to have, you know, an electric utility that is extremely reliable. Um, by all standards. Um, you know, what it takes to do those two things in this community. And for us to have the opportunity in this community to have a municipal utility like we do. Um, I, I just, I, I do think that someone said it earlier, I'm not sure if it was uh, Stevie or who. But sometimes I think we take that for granted. And um, I, I certainly have a, a great appreciation for it. And I, I appreciate um, your effort and all of the water department's effort for everything you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're making me feel kind of bad that I went to the power and not the water.
No, no, no.
That's okay.
I enjoy, I enjoy the power as well, but uh, glad we had representation at the, at the water conference.
Yeah, and I really wish that I could have brought the award with me tonight. I don't know if you've heard. Uh, A W W A is actually having some staffing issues. So they're a little bit behind on getting out the picture. So there's a picture of us uh, getting the award. Uh, and there was also, we'll be getting a plaque. So, uh, again, I, again, I just can't thank my staff enough, uh, for, you know, being able to keep doing this. So I hope it goes on long after me, so. But thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Right.
Uh, move on to miscellaneous comments. Uh, only have one uh, comment to make. And then I'll turn it back over to the, our visitors here. But uh, next board meeting is September the fourth. One day before we meet again, uh, Mary Gonzalez would be celebrating a birthday.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Mary.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, again.
I would now ask if there's anyone in the public that wants to uh, comment on tonight's agenda and anything that we've presented tonight. You can come up to the podium.
Yeah. Three minutes.
Thanks. I just wanted to share with y'all, based on the marketing presentation today. Um, I and some colleagues met with Evergy's marketing department along with the customer assistance and energy solutions groups over the past few um, weeks. And uh, you know, our, our basic question to the marketing folks was, uh, you're a monopoly utility. Why are you spending money on marketing and not on getting information to people who uh, need services and uh, and incentives from the federal government and from your own efficiency programs? And um, and you know, they had a lot of, they had some fake boundaries or whatever between the for-profit entity of Evergy paying for like the wall on the city royals versus the ratepayers that go to these other programs. But uh, that notwithstanding, they had a pretty great series of targeted uh, outreach based on the information they had behind, um, you know, on their side of the database on who would need certain kinds of programs, uh, had been focused on the LEAP um, and the W A P programs in the past. But um, now it's, is being expanded and will be rolled out in January, I think, for their side, for their own efficiency programs that are now live. Um, but the, the folding in the Hira and Holmes programs from the K C C, uh, they're started collaborating with those, that staff uh, as the consultant gets on boarded, I guess. There's, it, I don't, yeah, uh, the K C C is a mess, so I know it's hard to work with them. But the uh, the, 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 as far as the marketing goes, I'd love to learn more about how marketing budget, I mean, we're a monopoly. I think the best way to show that B P U is a, a good utility that cares about its customers is to get resources into people's hands, not to, not to keep saying it. So I'm not sure if there's um, some details I can get at some point about the proportion of marketing budget that goes to that kind of messaging or that could go to messaging in combination with the U G Communications Department on resources that can get to people's homes. And if the, if the V P U is the one passing that information along, I think that's very valuable and maybe the most valuable thing a marketing department can do in a utility. So just wanted to share that and thanks.
Thank you. State your name, address.
My name is Fanny Hill. I don't want to comment. I just want to know who I can meet with to talk to about these bills, because you can't reach anybody in customer service. I have uh, vacant rental property that nobody lives in, that I'm paying two hundred and forty dollars a month. And as much as a hundred and fifty dollars a month and nobody's there and there's no usage there. And um, I've been shoving out a thousand dollars a month for the last four or five months, just on B P U bills for three properties. And my bill has never been more than two hundred and something dollars and I got a bill the other day for six hundred and nineteen dollars for where I live.
Okay, we do have customer service.
Get them on the phone.
Well, they're here. If you can, uh, if you can meet with her, Janana. Okay, thank you.
You.
Is there anyone else, uh, present wishing to speak about tonight's agenda? Rob, is there anyone? All right. So there's no, no one else wanting to uh, speak about tonight's agenda, Mr. President? So I'll turn it back over to you, board comments.
Ron?
Uh, yeah, just real briefly, um, as always, I, I want to thank uh, the members of the public who attended, engaged tonight. Um, in person, online. Um, we, we sincerely appreciate it. I sincerely appreciate it. Um, I literally had something to say on every single presentation, so I think I'm, I'm done, Mr. President.
Mary?
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody that did their presentations and how kind of circular the whole thing is. When Jeremy is talking about the internship, um, and young people from our community learning. It, it reminded me of our engineer Philip when he was an intern way back when. And the progression I've seen from him as an intern to watching him do a presentation at the podium. And um, also as far as young people and learning, uh, Nick's uh, thing about the summer internship program. I've served on the Rosedale Board and been very familiar with their summer intern program. And it's young people uh, getting job training and learning about uh, the working world. So all of that kind of went into a circle tonight of uh, young people learning and brought back a lot of memories of watching that intern. And Steve, I drink B P U tap water.
Brett?
Uh, echo previous comments. I really appreciate all the, the great public engagement uh, that we've had. And the staff presentations were fantastic. Um, there are obviously some big things coming up as our schedule gets more and more packed here uh, through the fall. So encourage uh, members of the community to stay engaged, um, keep making your voice heard, whether it's here emailing us or coming to community engagement events. But um, you know, lots, lots ahead for the B P U and uh, certainly appreciate all, all of the input we can get. Thank you.
Stevie? Thank you. Uh, Tom, again, I do want to say thank you to Steve, to Jeremy and to uh, Nick for your presentations. Uh, again, I think highlighting uh, the, the wonderful utility that we have here in Wyandotte County uh, uh, is, is a wonderful thing. I think uh, we were all impressed and will remain impressed uh, with, with uh, the work that you do as, as staff members of, of B P U. And uh, uh, so, so thank you so much for your presentations tonight and hopefully uh, our public will, will, will hear it and hear it well. Um, do have appreciation for the public that uh, made their comments as well and want to, to share. Uh, again, defend my, my belief. Uh, but then I have to, have to, to uh, to say that our staff has to do more. We have to do more as it pertains to customer service. If we have people calling the B P U and cannot reach anyone, shame on us. Um, if other utilities, if we close our lobby and don't allow our customers to be able to call in and get what they want done, then I can understand their desire to want to see somebody and, and get their things resolved. Until we resolve that issue, they're going to continue to ask for that, because there's no other utility that has that type of service. But their telephone service is spot on. Uh, and let me say it like this. I um, I, I have, I, I have a two thousand twelve Chevy Cruze. The two thousand twelve Chevy Cruze does not have cruise control, one of the things that I love and I'm used to, but it's a luxury. But I do know that in order to have cruise control, if there is a cost involved. And so instead of taking on that cost, I just drive without it. And I think that, that, that if, 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 if the car drives, it gets me, if it does what it's supposed to do without cruise control, it, it's satisfactory. But if a person cannot get what they want done without the lobby being open, then we need to consider uh, what we're, what we're doing there. Because if we're paying the, the, and what they talked about these fees, I'm, I'm, I'm going to share, share more about that. If they're talking about these fees, uh, and what they're paying for, for the utility service, uh, uh, I think that they deserve good customer service. Um, and uh, I'm going to, gonna, gonna say that the cry of relief is heard by every single board member. We're dealing with, with an integrated resource plan that looks at the direction of, of utility going forward. Also, we're dealing with the selection of a general manager who will place fresh eyes on the longstanding perception of lack of trust and transparency in our unified government and also B P U. I've long advocated for communication, efficiency and accountability since I began this, on this board this year. We have the opportunity to, to collaborate with unified government to bring down costs. But I believe that it cannot and will not happen until we sit down together and come up with a plan. I was not elected by the unified government, however, we all were elected by the people of the unified government. Real change will not happen when you, real change will happen when you, the people who elected us, hold each of us accountable. We need you to tell us what you want and then we need you to make sure that we ju- do just that. We need you. Those are my comments. Thank you. Senator?
Thank you. I'm um, I'm David Haley and I approve that message. It was a kind of an affirmation of certainly what I think many of us on the board feel in terms of how we're here and how we're looking at this bifurcated uh, circumstance between our parent company or um, the U G and some issues that we'll have to undertake here at uh, at the utility. And how it's drawn from ratepayer, taxpayer, it's the same, the same entity. And so um, I want to thank uh, those that did come out um, from uh, the public and raised the various issues that they did. I want to thank, uh, those that did come out, um, from, uh, the public and raise the various issues that they did. Uh, certainly appreciate those insights. Um, want to, um, thank, uh, Nick and, and, uh, for the communications update. I genuinely appreciate the work that you're doing. Uh, I think we all do. And Jeremy on the internship program that showed the dovetail between that, um, application of what we do and the learning process and how it benefits our utility, um, as a whole. Um, and certainly again, Steve, uh, both Steves, um, for the good work with turbidity. I loved that when I learned the word, it was just something I've tried to inculcate in my everyday language, turbidity and its meaning, the density of the water and the temperature. It was such a learning experience and then to be recognized uh, for those fifteen years, I too drink, uh, the BPU water. Uh, and, um, and it's excellent. Very proud of, again, of the presentation tonight. Um, finally, um, I, um, wanted to make a request, uh, Mr. President. Um, as we look for ways to recoup, um, revenue that we may be held responsible for is if I could request or if we might request, uh, the amount that we give, uh, to, um, the UG in terms of services, as we all know, the UG does not pay, um, for the buildings that they utilize for electrical water use. We've written that out. I don't know if we're under some ordinance or some, uh, mandate to not collect. But, um, I'd like to know and would appreciate if Ms. Austin or, um, Mr. Otting, he's, he's not here. If somebody could help find what that number might be in, I know it's probably not very much, but it may be as much as maybe ten million or so. Yeah. Um, for how much we forgive, uh, annually in the services we don't collect for because they're UG buildings. And, um, that is, oh, of course, my bi-monthly plea, plea for opening the lobby. Uh, I'd be remiss in not saying the quickest way to expedite transparency, accountability and is to open lobby. I suggest seven to seven. Let's do a trial run and plead with the board. Certainly, Mr. Johnson, we've got the ability right out here for a kiosk. We already have it. It functioned very well before COVID and, uh, just do a trial run. Let's see how it goes. Uh, people cannot call in to make an appointment. They can't get there if they log in, if they work between three o'clock up to three o'clock. So this little pretense of having lobby open needs to really be, um, find itself in reality. It, it won't take that much to do it. We have the personnel that can do it, that can work at seven to seven or something and bilingual and augment that. We already have the existing resources to do it. Let's just do a trial run. I plead, um, with you, um, Mr. Johnson and board, let's do it now. And finally, I said finally a couple of times. I'm starting to sound like a Baptist minister. But Mary, happy birthday. You know, it's something we, we go through these, these dates that we pull through here and it's quite a celebration. Uh, and really happy birthday to you as, as you transcend and, um, Mr. President to you and your upcoming, uh, big, is it double nickel or whatever that celebration you have coming up, you and your bride. Um, wish you the very best in those endeavors. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo, uh, comments from the other board members and thank the staff for their presentations and thank the public for showing up and, um, making their feelings known. We hear you. There are only certain things that we can do, that we have the power to do, but we will do what we can. I assure you. So that's all I have to say. So.
And I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.